Good evening. I'd like to call the city council meeting of Monday, December 5th, 2022 to order. If I can have our city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Flores.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Present.
Councilmember Noble.
Here.
Councilmember Dugo is absent tonight. Councilmember Diaz.
Present.
Councilmember Busque.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All right. I have a motion made by Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Tharp, second by Councilmember Noble. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That motion carries for zero. Moving on to comments from the public. For agenda items only, anyone wishing to speak on any agenda items, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right. Seeing no one. All right. We are now moving on to special business. But before we move on to special business, I want to move on to special notices or acknowledgements. First of all, I understand we have a group here from Wellington High School. Welcome. They're here to do, learn about government and how the function. So I ask my councilmembers to be on your best behavior. And then the next item, I want to ask everybody to join me. Our city manager, turning 18 today, so please join me in wishing her a very happy birthday. And we're all going to sing, so. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Andrea. Happy birthday to you.
And for the record, she's 21.
She loves the attention, so that's why I did that at the beginning of the meeting rather than at the end. Happy birthday, Andrea. All right. And now moving on to special business. Today, we have a presentation. We're going to be, actually, rather than present it, let's ask Marjorie from DAR to come up and do the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City staff. In July 2026, America will be celebrating its 250th birthday, believe it or not. We stand on the eve of a grand commemoration. And in July 2026, the United States will mark its 250th anniversary. The National Society Daughters of the American Revolution has established an America 250 Committee to plan DAR's involvement during our nation's upcoming birthday. Much like the bicentennial celebration in 1976, this observance provides an excellent opportunity for community involvement. In October 2021, a meeting was held with the Palm Beach School District Supervisors promoting a plan to celebrate America 250 by focusing on the graduating class of 2026. These students are currently in 9th grade. There was great enthusiasm from the staff and member of the school board, Erica Whitfield. Several ideas were discussed, including presenting the DAR Constitution Book to each student, also creating an awareness campaign promoting the importance of the year to both students and parents, and creating activities for students in each of the 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grades to earn points by participating in various activities through the years culminating in a group of seniors taking a trip with me to Washington, DC. Several meetings have been held since then, and the update is as follows. The America 250 Awareness Campaign is being created by the Communications Department of the Palm Beach School District that would coincide with Constitution Week, which every year is September 17 to 23. Script was created that was shared with each high school principal, highlighting the America 250 Celebration being planned, and to let the students that they will know, to know they are among an incredibly special group of students who will be graduating when our country celebrates its 250th birthday. The Florida State Region of DAR challenged each daughter to create an individual project in their community, and this is mine. The goal is to create a recipe for this project that can be shared with the other 67 school districts throughout Florida. These graduating students will be able to vote, join the military, continue their higher education, and enter the workforce. I believe it is critical that they learn the meaning of the Constitution, the laws of our country, and the importance of voting. For more than a century, the members of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution have dedicated themselves to historical preservation, promotion of education, and encouragement of patriotic endeavor, and this project includes all of those. Most city managers and county officials in Palm Beach High School District have already agreed to sponsor their individual students with the DAR Constitution Book, including the four high schools located in the unincorporated areas. The total estimated incoming 9th grade students in Palm Beach County, believe it or not, totals about 14,000. Your Green Acres City Manager Andrea McHugh deserves a special thanks for her support of this project. And at this time, I would like to present your certificate of appreciation from the Daughters of the American Revolution. I'm going to just put that out here. Mr. Mayor. The mayor. And we'll keep track of these students over the next four years, so you'll hear from me. The contents is going down in can here. And this is yours. And I'll get it out of there. Thank you very much.
All right. And this next one, this next presentation means a lot to me, just because, you know, little story, was it a month and a half ago?
Yeah, somewhere right around the end of October, correct.
There was a building in the city of Green Acres that the electrical panel caught fire, and some individuals were living in, on preferred or conditions that were probably not fit for most people. It, this made the news. Our firefighters helped out. I know the city manager was very involved. But unfortunately, we can only go so far, and it's always great when you have people from the community who willingly just, you know, decided they're going to step up and help those that are, that are in need. And the two individuals, or the two organizations that we're going to recognize here today, without us ever having to ask, they willingly stepped up and decided to help these, I believe it was 10, 10 households.
10 units, correct.
10 households with infants, elderly individuals in the household. So it's, it's with great gratitude that I sit here today and I get to acknowledge these individuals, and I know that the council, I know our staff, and I know our fellow residents also appreciate the hard work, the dedication, and your selflessness to step up. So I would like to call Simon Electric to come up, and we're also going to acknowledge. And please give him a big round of applause.
I mean, I don't know what else to say other than, it does give me like a real good feeling that I'm, when I'm able to help in a meaningful way. And, you know, it's not often that I have the opportunity to help in a way that really means something, you know, and that, not expecting anything in return, it's just a clean, happy feeling for me. So I'm actually grateful for that. So, thank you.
The other organization that unfortunately, we don't have a representative here to receive the certificate of appreciation, but they were the ones that stepped up and helped place these individuals in hotels for a duration. Are they still there?
No, no. It was, unfortunately, there were a couple of units that weren't able to get back online just due to the severity of the damage. So they worked to place those residents in hotels for a period of time until they could get back online as well. Simon Electric was able to bring back, I believe, seven of the units, I think, seven or eight of the units, and then the remainder, they, that organization provided hotel rooms for them.
That organization is Healing Hearts Foundation, and obviously, as soon as they saw what happened in the news, they stepped up, they contacted the city, and they said that they were going to help these individuals get back on their feet. So we're very, very thankful to organizations like these, to Simon Electric, small business right here, who saw a need and stepped up. So once again, thank you so much for everything that you guys have done, and to Healing Hearts. We're very appreciative. So thank you. All right. Moving on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. I have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Councilmember Diaz. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That motion carries for zero. All right. Moving on to our regular agenda. We have public hearing for ordinance 2022-23, second reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-23, second reading, amending Chapter 16 zoning regulations, Article 1 in general, Section 16-1, by amending certain definitions and adding definitions, further amending Chapter 16, Article 4, supplemental district regulations, Division 1, generally by adopting new Section 16-609 to be entitled live entertainment permit. Section 16-610 to be entitled outdoor storage, display, sales, cooking, and sales of propane tanks, Section 16-611 to be entitled placement and use of portable storage units, and Section 16-612 to be entitled outdoor seating, providing for conflict severability, codification, and effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you. And tonight, we have our city consultant, Kara Erwin Ferris, presenting.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I'm presenting second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2022-23 for supplemental regulations. I have one minor change I would like to propose based on some comments that came back after LDR or DRC from staff. On page seven of the ordinance, under Section 5E, highlighted it in, on the, in front of you. Is it on the screen in front of you?
No.
Can we switch? Usually, I know how to do this stuff.
They revoked your privileges already? They revoked your privileges already?
So under Section 5 in the ordinance, there is a language in regards to commercial, the pods, the storage pods. A majority of that section relates to storage pods in residential lots. We had talked about putting restrictions on them, on how long they could be there, to give code enforcement the ability to limit. This is, of course, not applicable to pods that are associated with construction, because if you have a valid permit and you have to store things because you're doing an interior modification, you can have a storage pod based on that permit. This is for people who don't have active permits in residential communities. But in the last section, under E, there is discussion about commercial developments, and it limits them to one pod a year. And I'm just proposing to remove that sentence, which is on page seven, because we have some commercial businesses, like Walmart or others, that during the holidays have multiple storage pods, that they get approved through the special events process. So someone added the one limitation, and we're just going to strike it, because it's something that we actually handle during the temporary use process. So if it pleases the council, that would be the only change I would propose between first reading and second reading. And I know last time, there were some questions in regards to the live permits. And once again, I just want to reiterate that this is not, we're not going to make this a hard process. We're going to make it as easy as we do for the banners or the signs. It's a very minor permit. They can do a consolidation of events on one permit, and we're not out to make money for the process. It, it won't, it won't be as expensive as a temporary use permit. So, and of course, you'll be able to approve that when it comes through on resolutions, when they designate the cost for it. So that'll come back before you.
Thank you. Are there, are there any comments or questions from the council? All right. This is a public hearing, so I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2022-23. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-23 on the second reading with the modifications to Section E, as proposed by staff.
Second.
Section 5E.
5E, yes.
Yeah.
Is that a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion made by Deputy Mayor Tharp, second by Council, Councilmember Busque. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Zero. Thank you, Kara. All right. Moving on to ordinance 2022-38, first reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-38, first reading, amending Chapter 6, franchises, Article 5, solid waste, Division 1, generally, Section 6-276 of the City of Green Acres Code of Ordinances, to clarify that all rates under the franchise agreement may be amended by city resolution, providing for appeal of conflict in ordinances, severability, codification, retrospective application, and ineffective date.
Thank you. And we have Director of Purchasing Monica Powery presenting.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Today, I am presenting ordinance 2022-38. It's our current franchise agreement for solid waste, which allows for yearly rate increases, however, does not specify how the commercial rates are to be amended. Staff desires to clarify that all rates in the solid waste franchise agreement be amended through city council resolution. If you have any questions, I'm prepared to answer them.
Are there any comments or questions from the council?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 2022-38 on the first reading.
Second.
And are there any comments or questions from the council? I have a motion made by Councilmember Noble, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. No comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. That motion carries for zero. Thank you, Monica. All right. Moving on to ordinance 2022-42, first reading. If I could have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-42, first reading, amending Chapter 2, administration, Article 1 in general, by adding a new Section 2-2, naming of city programs, events, and facilities, providing for severability, conflicts, codification, and ineffective date.
Thank you. And we have our city manager, the birthday girl, presenting, City Manager Andrea McHugh.
You all are making turning 50 so much easier. Thank you very much, Mayor, Council. This was something that came up when we were having discussion regarding the city scholarship program. The council had an interest in having a policy or a procedure in place to assist in determining how our programs, events, and facilities, including property, were named. Our city attorney's office did establish this ordinance, creating a new section in the city's code, and it creates a uniform method and procedure for the naming of city programs, events, and facilities. Important to note, I'm not going to go through all of the specific guidelines. They are included in the packet for your review, and it was information that was provided previously under a discussion item. But important to note is that the naming authority is solely vested in the city council through the adoption of the ordinance, and a process will be established for naming, excuse me, city programs, events, and facilities. Any cost associated with it, of course, would be as part of our budget process with the naming of anything that the council wishes to move forward with. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2022-42 on first reading.
Are there any comments or questions from the council? Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Quick question. At one point, I know I brought up the, a four-fifth majority for approval. Is that part of this, or is that something we would do on the actual?
No, actually, you know what? Let me look at that. My apologies. Let me look at that before going to second reading, but I think that we would need some direction from the council if the council does have an interest in having it be a supermajority approval for this and not just a three to two. We can include that language in for second reading if the council desires that.
All right. Are there any comments or questions? Councilmember Noble.
I would like to have a supermajority involved.
I'll get consensus. I'm just trying to see if there's any other comments or questions before I get consensus. No? All right. So we'll move on to consensus. I'll start with Councilmember, I mean Deputy Mayor Tharp, supermajority.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble. Councilmember Diaz.
Yes.
And Councilmember Busque.
Yes.
All right.
I'll take care of that for second reading. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So this is an ordinance?
Yes, it will be an ordinance.
So I do need a.
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-42, first reading with the future amendments of a supermajority.
Second.
All right. I have a motion made by Deputy Mayor Tharp, second by Councilmember Diaz. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That motion carries for zero. All right. We're moving on to discussion items. However, there are none tonight, so skipping right along to comments from the public on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak, ah, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You guys can come up and tell us what you learned today. Don't all jump at once. All right. Moving on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. The Holiday in the Park, again, an amazing team effort, community and recreation services, Public Works, PBSO, Fire Rescue, all of our volunteers. So it was a great success, had a great turnout for that. Just want to thank everyone for that, all of their effort on that. That was this past Saturday at Community Park. We are very happy to report that we are going to be taking approximately $10,000 in toys and gift cards over to Astero this week. So we are very grateful for all the efforts made by our public information officer, our director of human resources, our fire rescue team, and PBSO. They have been amazing throughout. I know that they are going to really appreciate receiving all of those toys and gift cards when we take those over this week, so we're very grateful for that. We do have a community conversation coming up. We have them monthly. Our next one is this week on the 9th, from 6:30 to 8 at the community center. The topic is eating disorders. For all you students, we give community service hours for those, and we have them every month. So if you come to that, you can get community service hours for participating in those conversations. And just to note, while it is not ours, the Wellington Parade is on the 11th of December. The city does participate in that parade, so we are looking forward to that. And we will be hosting a mock city council with Elsie Swain on the 15th of December. And just moving ahead a little bit, Fiesta de Pueblo is going to be on the 7th of January, and our Artsy event will be here at City Hall on the 21st of January. And the only other thing I wanted to note is I wanted to congratulate our chief, Chief Brian Fuller. He has, and I don't know if it's official, but he has been asked to serve as the vice president of the Palm Beach County Fire Chiefs Association. So I have no doubt that he will provide great perspective and represent the city very well. So congratulations. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the city attorney's report. Attorney Tercivia. Thank you. All right. Moving on to the mayor's and city council report. I'm going to start to my right. Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Just a note, and it was a great event coming up on December 17, December 17. It's outside the city limits, but it's a great cause. Wreaths Across America over at the National Cemetery on 441. We'll be laying wreaths, starting at noon on the 17th. Again, great volunteer hours for the students that are out there. And then lastly, there is another birthday in the midst up here last week. Councilmember Diaz, happy belated birthday by one week.
Happy birthday, Suzie. Councilmember Noble.
Only to say that the Holiday in the Park event was fantastic. I know there are probably hundreds of kids there, but it seemed like there were thousands of them, and they were all enjoying it, all the facilities that were available. And I have to say that we have one of the most beautiful Christmas trees I've ever seen. You have to go out there and see how well it's lit. And of course, I congratulate Michelle Thompson for the work she did with her staff. It's a beautiful event, and I think we should continue it every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Diaz.
I have a couple of things. First, I'd like to thank Captain Moore for liaising with the River Bridge Plaza owners to ensure that we had both of those entrances and egresses fixed. It's a lot smoother to go in and out of that plaza now. Congratulations to everyone involved on a very successful toy drive, and we're looking forward to seeing pictures from when you get over there, so make sure you share those. Thank you as well to the AIFF Local 2928 for donating 50 turkeys to serve our families in Green Acres. Thank you to Dion Ambrosio for coordinating the donations, Tyler Walworth, and all of the firefighters who were part of the delivery efforts. I was honored to ride along with fellow council member Judy Dugo, and the families were so incredibly grateful for our generosity. And while we know this is the season for giving, I ask my fellow councilmembers, as well as all within the city, to understand and remember that the need within our city is not just isolated to the holidays. Thank you as well to Ms. Michelle Thompson and the Community and Recreation Services team for coordinating Saturday's event. It was nice to see everybody come out again as a community. And thank you to our very own Santa for making sure that he and Mrs. Claus made an appearance. And before the rest of my councilmember hears it from anybody else, I did end up on Santa's naughty list for pretty much tearing down half of his display. So I want to apologize to Mr. and Mrs. Claus personally and promise to do better. And special thanks to the team that was there putting their house back together again. And then lastly, I'd like to, it's funny, because we're ending the evening with students, and I actually started my day with students over at Green Acres Elementary this morning. So I'd like to thank Junior Achievement AP Debbie Harnoy and Green Acres Elementary Team for inviting me to be a part of their career day. Our community officer Edgar Guadine and Dion Ambrosio from Fire Rescue, our recreation manager Jean Francois were also there. I can tell you our future in Green Acres and in our, in our county looks bright, because these kids were so incredibly inquisitive. And so I wanted to leave my councilmember with three laws that the students passed this morning in 2nd grade. The first one is Andrea's Law, which will prohibit anyone from making fun of another person. The second one is Anthony's Law, which will prohibit rudeness and promotes being kind to one another. to one another. And the last one is Kayden's Law, which will ban all unfrosted Pop-Tarts. With that, I conclude, thank you.
Thank you.
That was excellent, Mrs. Diaz, I cannot follow that. So I wish everybody a happy holiday.
Thank you, Councilmember Busque. For the mayor's report, at the last League of Cities, for those of you that don't know, I was appointed to the Board of the League of Cities. We had a great presentation on, oh my God, I'm forgetting already, Robert's Rules? Robert Rules, which is how we run these meetings. I thought it was a great refresher. It was, it was also good to, to see that other people that do the same job, council members, mayors, had some of those questions. Robert's Rules is a very thick book, and following that, it could be, could be very complicated, but they tried to summarize it. I, I think it would be a great idea, one of, maybe in the first quarter next year, to just do a quick refresher. That's all they did, it was 10, 15 minutes that they went, went through the rubber rules. I think it's just good for, for all of us to tighten up a little bit and continue to, to grow and develop up here. Michelle and your team, fabulous job. You may see Santa walking around here, I thought I saw him earlier. Is he, is he out here? Yeah. So Santa's out here somewhere, and he does a terrific job. He starts growing his beard like three months, three or four months ahead of time, and, and he takes great pride in, and you could tell he, that, that he enjoys giving back to the community. I think it's a great event, and I'm, I'm trying to speak a lot here.
Mayor, should I hide?
Stalling a little bit so that we can...
We could sing happy birthday to Ms. Diaz if we need to.
No, okay, yes, yes, you can to her.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
I think Ms. Diaz needs to go hide if Santa's coming, I'm on the naughty list, remember.
So, so the event was, was, was very nice, I hope that you all took time to, to visit. For you students, I don't know if you guys heard me a couple of times say, "public hearing", did you guys notice that? Why do you think we do that? What, what do you think we're trying to collect? Feedback and input from, from our community. That is my favorite part of, of being up here, is listening to what our community has to say and what they want to see, the direction that they want to see. So that's extremely important when you have a local government where we provide an opportunity to, to really listen to you guys. At the end of the day, all of us up here, except the two individuals at the end, were elected by, by our peers. So great responsibility on your hands when you guys turn 18. Be part of the elections, be part of the process. If you see something that's not right, bring it up to the attention. The, the council members or the mayor, they may not know that there is an issue. So part of being a, a good citizen, a good resident, is to be engaged. You don't have to attend every meeting, but if you see something, something that could be addressed or fixed, write us an email, come to the meetings, let us know.
Ms. Mayor, if I may, you, you actually are a prime example of that, when you met with some of the children at one of the middle schools, and they complained about why they didn't have a crosswalk.
Yeah.
And it, it was a simple question, simple input, but results happen because of it. So that's the community engagement that, that the mayor is speaking of, and it's fantastic.
So let your voice be heard, so. And I see that we have Santa in the room, let's give a big round of applause to Santa. Thank you so much, you were terrific. We apologize that somebody up here almost knocked on your hole. No, no, but thank you.
I'll try.
Thank you for what you do, the great pride that you take in, in doing that, and we're, we're all very appreciative, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm done blabbering. That concludes my, my comments. Meeting's adjourned, have a good evening. You don't have to do that.
Oh.
Yep.
No, you technically don't, you can just adjourn the meeting.
Friends, the Beatles, I get by with a little help from my friends.
That part of the song?
Ah, yeah.
It's like leaning, like the leaning tower here, this water bottles are getting so thin on plastic, they're like, look.
Glenn, how are you?
Good, how are you, Ty?
Good. You snuck in here. Have a good weekend? I did. Yourself?
I liked our other cups.
Holiday season.
Good evening, I'd like to call the city council meeting of Monday, December 5th, 2022 to order. If I can have our city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Flores.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Present.
Councilmember Noble.
Here.
Councilmember Dugo is absent tonight. Councilmember Diaz.
Present.
Councilmember Busque.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by council member, Deputy Mayor Tharp, second by council member Noble, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries four zero. Moving on to comments from the public for agenda items only, anyone wishing to speak on any agenda items, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing no one, all right, we are now moving on to special business, but before we, we move on to special business, I want to move on to special notices or acknowledgements. First of all, I, I understand we have a group here from Wellington High School, welcome, they're here to do, learn about government and how the function, so I ask my council members to be on your best behavior. And then the, the next item, I want to ask everybody to join me, our city manager, turning 18 today, so please join me in wishing her a very happy birthday, and we're all going to sing, so. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to your Andrea. Happy birthday to you.
And for the record, she's 21.
She loves the attention, so that's why I did that, at the beginning of the meeting rather than at the end. Happy birthday, Andrea. All right, and now moving on to special business, today we have a presentation, we're going to be, actually, rather than present it, let's ask Marjorie for, from DAR, to come up and do the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and city staff. In July 2026, America will be celebrating its 250th birthday, believe it or not. We stand on the eve of a grand commemoration, and in July 2026...